I'd like to call the June 11th, 2012, meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item is the invocation tonight will be given by Karen Etheridge.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we give you thanks for another beautiful day. We'd like to thank you and give you the glory for our recent graduates from JP Knapp Early College as well as Currituck County High School. We wish them safe travels in their future and bless them. And we pause now for a moment of silence.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our own.
Next is the school spotlight and tonight it's on Currituck County High School.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, members of the board, and Ms. Scholler. It is my pleasure to come before you tonight to share in the school spotlight. And I need to also share with you that since Friday was the last day of school, obviously, the students, most of them whom I was expecting to be here tonight, I don't see them yet. So they have already started their vacation.
Are you going to do a tap dance or something?
Maybe. So I'm sure that something came up and they could not be here. First, I would like to share with you that what we wanted to feature tonight were aspects of excellence at Currituck County High School over the past school year. And particularly tonight, we want to acknowledge those students who will not be back at Currituck County High School. First, from our sophomore class, we have three students who were selected for the North Carolina School of Math and Science, and this is an outstanding achievement. Not every high school has even one student who is accepted into the program. And for us to have three is just amazing because these students have to possess a high level of interest and achievement in the areas of math, science, and/or technology. And so we wish the best to Ashley Cleveland, Emily Faust, and Erin Remeshevsky. We also have two students, juniors, who won't be returning for their senior year, who have been selected to attend the North Carolina School of the Arts. The first student, Timmy Cremins, will be attending for visual arts. And the second student, Savannah Litten, is a member of our band. And I'd like to share with you statements from the band director because we knew in advance Savannah would not be here due to her mother having surgery today. Ms. Askins, our band director, shares. Savannah Litten is a trumpet player with the Currituck County High School marching nights, the symphonic band, the concert band, the percussion ensemble, and the jazz ensemble. She has also performed in a student-led wind quintet named Nightly Assortment. She has performed in groups around the state such as the Eastern District Honors Band, Albemarle Band Clinic, and the UNCG Honors Jazz Ensemble. Savannah stands out among the students at Currituck County High School with her high level of dedication, maturity, accountability, and musicianship. She is willing to work hard, and as a student leader in our band program, she has outshone many. We do have a video clip that was filmed on Friday afternoon of Savannah performing a selection on her trumpet entitled Alpine Horn. Savannah was also one of our graduation marshals. And just prior to graduation Friday night, when she shared with me that she would not be able to attend tonight, I said, "Well, I have my iPad. Do you have your trumpet?" And so that was a spur-of-a-moment video to showcase her playing, and we certainly wish her well. Ms. Robino, Timmy Cremins' art teacher, is here now and would like to share about his portfolio that enabled him to be attending the School of the Arts for the visual arts.
Thank you, Mrs. Newbern. Good evening, board members. It's good to see everybody. The North Carolina School of the Arts and Winston-Salem is a very prestigious program. And every year, they only accept approximately 25 students into their visual design program. And that's nationwide, not just for the state. So it's very competitive to get in. And in fact, we had an alumni about eight years ago, Lee Griggs. He attended Currituck High School to his sophomore year and then attended the North Carolina School of the Arts and graduated from there and came back and often talked to our students about the process. But since Lee, we have not had a student make it in there until Tim Cremins. The process is extremely rigorous. They have to have two letters of recommendation, application, and most importantly, they have to have a 20-piece portfolio and undergo approximately a five-hour individual and group interview where all their work is spread out and all three faculty members for the school come in and critique their work, one-on-one. And then the students have to participate in a visual literacy discussion regarding the works. And so that's highly competitive as well. You can't just have the talent. You also have to be able to articulate about your visual literacy. That really will make or break whether you get in. And Tim had a 20-piece portfolio and went to Winston and was accepted. And I did email his portfolio, and if I can jump on the computer, I'd like to pull that up and show you examples of his work, if that's okay. And I believe Tim's here? No? No? Well, Tim was supposed to come here tonight, so he might show up. No internet? Okay. I don't think I'm going to be showing you the portfolio today. I will tell you this, I will go ahead and link his portfolio onto the high school webpage so that you can please go and look at the work because he put a lot of work and effort into creating this portfolio. And as I mentioned, it is extremely difficult to get into the school, 25 students a year. It's extremely difficult. So I'll have that linked so that you can view it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as you can see, we had excellence in academics, excellence in the field of the arts, and we also had an excellent year in athletics. Currituck County High School won the Wells Fargo Cup this year, has not, first flight has won it the past eight, and we finally took it away from them this year. We're very proud of that. We also had six of 12 sports, our students were named the Daily Advance Player of the Year. So we had excellent athletes as well. At this time, I would like to ask Coach Justin Hill to come forward for a special presentation.
Good evening. My name is Justin Hill. I'm the varsity baseball coach at Currituck County High School. I would first like to thank my principal, Diane Newbern, for inviting me here tonight to celebrate the accomplishments of one of our fine student athletes. At this time, I would like to introduce you all to Harry Ferguson. This young man led and had an outstanding season as a member of the Currituck baseball team. Let me share with you some of his accomplishments. Harry made 15 appearances on the mound this year. He took the ball against the toughest competition we faced all year. He collected eight wins as a starter and made several other outstanding appearances in relief. In 80 innings of work, he gave up only 48 hits, including two no-hitters against Manio and Hurtford County. He struck out 100 batters while walking only 13 for the entire year. He finished with a 1.68 overall ERA and a dominant 0.87 ERA in conference play. For this, he was named the Northeastern Coastal Conference Player of the Year as well as the Currituck baseball defensive MVP. Coaches from across the state took notice as well, as he has earned a spot on the East Squad in this week's East-West All-Star Game. This game is for the top senior college prospects in the state. He will make his college decision in the next couple of weeks and will make someone real happy. After tossing his second no-hitter of the season, I was contacted by Paul Turner, who is the director of the North Carolina Spit Tobacco Program. This is an anti-tobacco organization that recognizes some of the top players in the state for their outstanding play as well as their commitment to be tobacco-free. We decided that Harry would be a great nominee for the North Carolina No Spit All-Star of the Year. After a voting process against other outstanding players across the state, Harry has been named the No Spit All-Star of the Year for the state of North Carolina. In recognition of this honor, he will be receiving a custom-fit ring along with this certificate for his valuable contribution to the Currituck baseball program and for pledging not to use spit or smokeless tobacco. He will continue to make us proud for years to come, and I want to wish him the very best. Ladies and gentlemen, a great ball player and an even better person, Harry Ferguson.
Harry, congratulations. Good luck in college. Congratulations on a great year, Mr. Hill.
As you can see, we've had a great year at Currituck County High School. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. And tell all those students that you mentioned, the three going to the School of Math and Science and the two going to the School of the Arts, you know that the board said congratulations. Great year. Okay, next, public comment session. Ms. Newbern?
Dr. Dobney and members of the board and Ms. Scholler, I want to thank you on behalf of Currituck County High School faculty and staff for the 100% support that we received from you for our graduation ceremony on Friday night. We appreciate very much that you were all there. Also, I would like to thank you on behalf of the seniors who participated in Project Graduation for your financial support. We were able to take 73 seniors to Virginia Beach to American Indoor Karting where they enjoyed driving go-karts inside, and then Laser Quest Tag. They had a great time there, followed by a breakfast buffet. Shoney's graciously opened an hour early to allow our seniors to go in and have breakfast. Then we came back to the high school and gave away door prizes. It was a great event, and we could not have done it without the support of the Currituck County Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, approval of the agenda. And I would like to add item B2, the superintendent's contract. Do I have a motion for approval?
No, moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item, recognition of employees. And first, we will recognize the 2011, 2012 Currituck County School retirees. And speaking on each retiree, we're going to start with Sharon Lewis from Griggs Elementary
Dr. Dobney, members of the board, Ms. Scholler, I want us to recognize Ms. Maddie Banks.
Ms. Maddie worked for the school system for 22 years. I've only had the pleasure of knowing her for the last four. We missed her this past year, and I was hoping to get some really good stuff on you from the staff members because it's always good to tell funny stories about folks, but I couldn't get anything on this woman. She, the only thing I could get was just how pleasure, how much of a pleasure it was to have her in our building, that she was always there for our students from the time they walked in the door in the morning, getting off the buses or coming in from being dropped off, to the hallway when they're changing classes. Just wanted to make sure that she was there for the kids to greet them and give them a nice friendly hello in the morning because you know that's what starts their day off really well, is having somebody who says hello to them in the morning because we don't know what they came to school with, from baggage at home. So it was always nice to have Ms. Maddie welcoming the students in our building. And she looked out for making sure that our classrooms were clean with the trash can and the vacuuming because it's all for the kids, and also looking out for our teachers and giving them those needed restroom breaks at times. So we definitely missed Ms. Maddie this past school year, and we wish her well in her retirement, although she is working again now. So we wish her well in everything that she does because we have missed her being part of our family at Griggs.
Yes, yes, thank you. I just want to thank Ms. Maddie, too. She watched my children when they were toddlers and young, and you hold a special place in my heart, and we love you. Even my kids now, when they see you, they kind of light up, and they're grown, of course, but they remember great memories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Maintenance Department, and Ms. Scholler will do that.
Good evening, board members. I'm filling in for Mr. Willis Simmons. And Willis wrote this, so I just want to let you know that. He's very sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but he had another engagement. The first honoree is Jimmy Brinson. I don't know if Mr. Brinson's here. And Mr. Simmons says Jimmy Brinson worked hard in the Maintenance Department as a painter for six years. He was never late for work and always willing to do whatever was necessary to get a job performed. I remembered him saying, "Tell me what you want, I will do it." That made my job so much easier. He retired to become a full-time hunter and fisherman. Also, he wanted to spend some time with his grandchildren. Good luck to Jimmy and family. So we wish him well. And the second honoree is Larry Franklin. And Mr. Simmons says about Mr. Franklin, "Larry Franklin worked in the Maintenance Department as floor technician for 12 years. He was very conscientious and dependable. He was never late and took great pride in his work. He has been sorely missed. Larry retired to do some traveling and spend some time with his grandchildren. Good luck to Larry and family." So it sounds like they're both doing well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next presenter, Virginia Arrington from Moyac Middle School.
Good evening, members of the board and Ms. Scholler. It's my pleasure to speak about Ms. Marcia Smith this evening. She worked for the state for many years before working with Currituck County Schools the last four years and the last two and a half being at the middle school level. Marcia came to the middle school committed to be being a member of the Bulldog family. She did more than data manager responsibilities and really got involved in the life of the school. And when we got Marcia, we also got Tony and Tilly, who came in and helped to update our marquee and spend hours reading with the students. From the time Marcia moved from MMS to Central Elementary to serve both middle schools, we have missed the therapy dog visits, the marshmallows, and the people treats. She made the best key lime pie and lemonade cake. Since her retirement in December, we know Marcia is enjoying her time caring for her family, traveling, taking the dogs to the hospitals to visit, and volunteering for Special Olympics. We congratulate her on her retirement.
Next presenter, Rhonda James Davis, Currituck County Middle School.
Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Scholler, it is my pleasure tonight to recognize one of our retirees, Mrs. Jerry Smejen. Mrs. Smejen started her teaching career during the 1984-85 school year by teaching Spanish to elementary students at the den for elementary schools in Currituck, I guess it was Griggs.
Griggs, Moyac, Knott's Island, and Central.
Central, right.
Dr. Dobney was my first principal.
But in 1998, she began servicing middle school students once the high school opened and the junior high became Currituck County Middle School. She serviced all of these students who went through there until Moyac Middle School opened in 2001, and then she would spend a semester at each school during the school year. I really have enjoyed learning, although I took French three years in high school, I've really enjoyed learning Spanish by observing her classes. So to you, Mrs. Smejen, I say, let me get it right, señora Smejen, glacial. And I'll add some French to it, très très bien.
Our next presenter, Whitney Bisbing, Moyac Elementary School.
Good evening, board members. Thanks for having us tonight. I'd like to call two members of the Panther family to come up here and join me, Ms. Cowell and Ms. Jewell. Come on, girls, don't leave me up here by my seat. Just stand right here by me. It's always happy and sad to say goodbye to family members, and that's what it is to us at Moyac Elementary School. I'm going to start with Denise. She leaves us with 33 years of teaching in Currituck County Schools. She's only been at Moyac Elementary for 11, but they've been 11 great years, and we sure appreciate everything she's done. She's contributed in great ways, including setting up our Authors Club, and you all have certainly heard about some of the things that they've published, and we've been in anthologies of poetry and all kinds of great things, newspaper. She's done a wonderful job with the writers at Moyac Elementary. She's also sponsored Read Across America, and you probably remember her best for her Cat in the Hat rendition. And we're going to miss her being there for that, but I'm hoping she's going to come back and be a guest reader. She's been a National Board certified teacher. She's been our Teacher of the Year. She's a wonderful part of our family and a good friend. Ms. Jewell, we love you and we'll miss you. And now I get to talk about Ms. Cowell. And I have one adjective for Ms. Cowell: brave. Ethel Cowell has driven the bus for 32 years and put all those little children behind her, day after day after day, and she always smiles just like this whenever she gets off of the bus. She's been a wonderful member of our Moyac family. I'm looking forward to her coming back as a volunteer, I hope. See her cutting those eyes at me. She's still got grandchildren at my school, so I'm hoping that we'll be seeing a little bit of Ms. Ethel. But she has been a wonderful, wonderful friend to our children. She's gotten them to and from school safely every day. She's dedicated, she's hardworking. Even when she didn't feel like coming to work, she's been there every day with this pretty smile on her face. I'm sure going to miss her, and it's going to be hard to replace her. We love you, Ms. Cowell, and we miss you.
Thank you. When I was principal of Moyac Elementary 100 years ago, Ethel was a bus driver for me also. And when I was superintendent, I used to meet with the bus drivers at the beginning of the year meeting, and I told them, "That is the one job in a school system I would never have," because it's difficult enough to control 30 students when you're a teacher in front of you, much less 55 students when they're behind you. Very difficult to control. Thank you. Next presenter, Tommy Wilson, Knott's Island Elementary School.
Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Scholler, we have two employees that are retiring this year. The first one is Mr. Stanford Flanagan, who we know as Mr. Shorty. He's not with us tonight. We all have truly enjoyed working with Shorty over the past few years. He is our custodian. He has done a great job in helping to keep our school clean and orderly. We have had many visitors give compliments on the cleanliness of our building, and that is a direct reflection of his hard work and dedication to our school. Shorty is always willing to help out wherever needed and has a great working relationship with the staff and students of our school. It has been a privilege getting to work with him over the past two years, and we're truly going to miss him. And we would like to wish him all the best as he begins this new chapter in his life. The second person we'd like to recognize tonight is Ms. Betty Martin. She'll come forward. It has been a great privilege working with Betty Martin over the past two years. One of my philosophies is I truly believe that a successful teacher must be able to build a good rapport and trust with students if the students are to be successful in school. And students have to know that you care about them and want them and want their best interests. Betty Martin exemplifies this. Betty has a dynamic rapport with her students, and the students have great admiration for her as well. She has provided a safe and nurturing classroom environment where all students feel comfortable and can achieve academic success. I have seen her over the past two years get students to accomplish things where others could not, and that's saying a lot for her efforts. She always puts students first. Betty's a hard worker, dependable, and willing to help out wherever needed. Betty has worked in Currituck County for 30 years. The past 22 of those has been at Knott's Island. Our school is a better place because of caring teachers like Betty Martin, and we are truly going to miss her, especially me. I've gone to chat with her the past two years. We've had a good working relationship. We would like to wish her all the best as she begins this new chapter of her life. And thank you, Betty, for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Our next presenter, Mary Wolf, Jarvisburg Elementary School. And standing in for Mary Wolf is...
I'm standing in for Mary Wolf this evening, and I'd like to be able to speak about her retiring, Ms. Darlene Merrill, if she would please come up. Ms. Merrill is one of the iconic people we have in our district. She sits behind the desk at several schools over the course of her career, and most recently, she'll leave us from Jarvisburg. She has worked 26 years, correct? 26 years with the school system, and she has got the tough job of being able to answer phones, direct parents down a hall, getting them signed in, making sure that they check their children out, all while trying to manage and enter all of the data that has to go in for attendance and budgets and paying the bills that goes through the school. So besides the bus driver job, this is one job that I don't think that I would like to have, Dr. Tommy, because she has pulled it off marvelously. 26 years she's been with us, and one of the biggest things that she will remember is that she has worked with four principals during her last final years, and I'm sure that that was probably very challenging, but she met it head-on and helped keep everybody glued in and really did a marvelous job of the transition down there. So we are most proud of her. Darlene, we hope that you will enjoy your retirement, but will come back and visit us. We'll need some training. Thank you so much.
Our next presenter, Diane Newbern, Currituck County High School.
Ms. Phyllis, come on down. Dr. Dobney and members of the board and Ms. Scholler, it's my pleasure to honor Ms. Phyllis Beasley. She has been a custodian at Currituck County She has been a custodian at Currituck County High School for 12 years, and I've had the privilege and the pleasure of working with her for the past three. The smile that you see on her face is the smile that we see every single day. She is a very faithful, dedicated, dependable, and if Ms. Phyllis was absent from school, something was wrong. She just did not call out from work at all and always was apologetic when she needed to take a day because she was ill or had an appointment. She did an excellent job with one of those thankless jobs of picking up, sweeping, cleaning up, and dumping trash behind over 1,000 students and 100 adults. No easy task. Every morning, she came in, she opened the building, she opened classrooms, turned lights on, to make the day ready for all of us as we came into Currituck County High School to do our jobs, and we have appreciated it so much. We are fortunate that while we're recognizing her for her retirement tonight, she does not officially leave us until August 31st, and so we have the pleasure of enjoying her for the summer, but when that day arrives that she gets to retire, we certainly wish her the best. She's going to be able to enjoy retirement with Mr. Earl, her husband, who was also a faithful custodian who retired a couple of years ago, and since he retired, she's been counting the days to be able to sit in that Currituck rocking chair with Mr. Earl in his. So we'll miss you, Ms. Phyllis, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presenter, Dawn Belangia from Central Elementary School. And standing in for Dawn is-
And I'm standing in for her this evening. Ms. Belangia sends her regrets. She is taking her daughter off to orientation, and that seems to be happening a lot lately. On the behalf, on her behalf and on behalf of her schools, we'd like to recognize Ms. Norrie Casca. Don't believe she could be with us this evening, but she did send me some prepared remarks. She said that Ms. Casca has been working for Currituck County School System for 14 years, and during that time, she has touched many children in a positive way. While with the Currituck County School System, she has worked with, in 4th grade, 5th grade, and most recently transitioned to a 2nd grade classroom where she helped younger students find a love of reading. She has been an active participant in everything from school dances to talent shows to fall festivals over the years. She's also served for several years as the NCAE rep at the school and has taken on an active role in that position, lobbying our staff and others across the state for positive changes in educational policies. Mrs. Casca is looking forward to her retirement, spending lots more time being a grandma, but they know that she will never lose her heart for teaching, and they expect her to come back and volunteer. So they wish her good luck in her retirement. Thank you.
And our next presenter, Terry Godfrey from Shawboro Elementary School.
We share her, so I have to come too.
Dr. Dobney, Ms. Scholler, members of the board, this is very hard for me, because Nancy and I go back a long way. I taught Nancy's children, those two boys of hers, and I never could understand why she thought it was strange when they wanted to stand up and eat, because that's what I always do. And she came to me and she talked about that, and you know, that's just a part of life. Who wants to sit down and eat a whole meal at one time? So I let her know that her boys were normal, if you can call me normal. But Nancy has represented our teachers very well as the president of NCAE. She has spent countless hours on the road campaigning for our teachers, campaigning for our students, wanting what's best for education for our people here in Currituck County. When I walk in her classroom, I see global awareness all the time. She is singing, she is dancing, she is presenting information to them from other countries, and it is just a joy. She tried to get me to do a dance, but I had two left feet, and I just could not get that straight either. But even more than that, Nancy is such a team player. She will do whatever you ask her to do to help our children. When I first became principal, I was flying by the seat of my pants, so every two weeks I'd say, "Nance, can you do this?" She'd say, "Ms. Godfrey!" But then she would do it anyway. And she did it very well. She's given us so many plays, so many musical performances. She has given us Shawboro's Got Talent. She has been there for every kindergarten program. If somebody else is in charge of the program, Nancy still helps out. She works with me on Friday mornings outside for duty. It is amazing how many of the parents who go through that line who had Nancy as their teacher, and they're still looking at her and the kids are saying, "You taught my mom, you taught my mom." So that is so, so very wonderful for Nancy. She's just a friend. Nancy's a friend to everybody she's ever met, and we just really, really appreciate that. And one of the things that touches me so much is, you know you have those moments where you just feel like, what else? And then she comes and says something that just lifts your spirit. So she looks for that silver lining in every dark cloud, and we really appreciate that. She's dedicated to our children. She's determined to help them all learn to love music and learn to dance. More than anything else, she gives our students confidence in themselves, to know that they can be whatever they want to be, that they can do whatever they want to do with their lives. And it's evident, as you've seen here, that she's touched a lot of lives. I just want to say thank you, Nancy, for a job well done. And I want you to remember, we love volunteers at Shawboro and at Moyoc. And to let you know, you've given us all 24 years of love, and you will surely be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks for being here. Nancy's made me promise not to tell any of her secrets, so I'm gonna uphold that promise. We love her and we miss her, and it's gonna be hard, hard, hard to walk in that music room without seeing Ms. Lurfin there.
Dr. Dobney, may I gather all the retirees for one last picture as a group?
Sure.
Can I get you up from the floor, please?
And while she's gathering the retirees, I'd just like to mention that the board held a reception for all the retirees prior to the meeting tonight, and I would just like to once again thank all our retirees for making Currituck Schools a better place for our students.
You can step back just a touch. And then get tight.
Okay, thank you once again, retirees. Next presenter, Kiba Baldwin.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Scholler. This evening, I come to you to share some information about our one particular bus driver. Last month, I came to you and shared some information on a local level and asked to come back and share on a state level. At this point, I would like to bring Mr. Roy Harvey up. While he's coming, Mr. Harvey is a quiet man. On May 3rd, Mr. Harvey represented Currituck County at our district school bus rodeo. And just again to reiterate a little bit about the school bus rodeo, it is an obstacle course based on everyday driving that our yellow school buses would encounter. And so Mr. Harvey was one of 38 drivers represented in our region, and he finished seven out of 38, which qualified him for our state rodeo. And I can tell you, it was a good experience. So on that day, being one of those 10 participants or qualifiers for the state rodeo, he was presented with a district certificate. Rodeo for District 3 is our district representing Currituck County Schools. And so he got this certificate while we were there, being one of those 10. So then we were optimistic, glad and hopeful about going to the state rodeo, which was the end of May. There, he was part of 48 drivers just about representing across the state. And I will tell you, it was a great learning experience. We had an opportunity to witness one of the TV news stations came out and wanted to drive the bus route, and so they allowed this TV reporter to drive the route, and let's just say, I wouldn't trust him on the bus. The obstacles that they set out that day were truly something. If you can imagine driving the front wheel of a school bus and the two back wheels of a school bus between two tennis balls that are about 24 inches wide, and you can't see it. So those were just one of the, some of the obstacles that they presented, and Mr. Roy did very well. He just did not do well enough to walk away with anything that day, but considering part of the 48 that went, he did very well. And so we are hopeful of next year of representing Currituck County again and also at the state level. But even though we did not walk away with any monetary prizes, we did walk away with a first, as I was able to kind of ask around at the state office and state level to find out what has been Currituck's participation in this school bus rodeo. Well, it comes out to be that Mr. Harvey here is our first state qualifier for Currituck County in a school bus rodeo. So we have a little something here before him, but before I give this to him, I want to kind of thank some folks, and the first person I would like to thank is Ms. Godfrey, because Mr. Harvey operates, his first job is the school custodian at Shawboro Elementary, but he drives a bus for us, and he fills in wherever. This is the only man that I know that knows every bus route in Currituck County. And so it's easy to call on Mr. Harvey, and just like many of our retirees, Mr. Harvey does not know the answer, no. Anything that we ask, anything that we've been able to get him to do, he's done it. And I would tell you, just this morning, I passed him on my way coming to Currituck, he was leaving Currituck on an activity bus, driving to Robinson County, and he made it back for this today. So in my eyes, this is a good person for Currituck who has served this county for 29 years, and I'm looking for a couple more good years before he decides to take on his honey-do list that I'm pretty sure his wife may have for him. So at this point, I would like to present Mr. Harvey a certificate in recognition for being the first Currituck County Schools bus driver to represent our school district at the state rodeo dated May 24, 2012.
Congratulations, Mr. Harvey, and thank you for representing Currituck County. Next presenter, Ms. Scholler.
I'd like to ask Ms. Monique Wilkins to come up front, please. I'm happy to announce that Ms. Wilkins has been named our Regional Career and Technical Education Director of the Year, which is quite an honor in our region. Northeastern North Carolina has a strong reputation for good vocational technical education programs, and to be the best of the best is saying something, I think is very special, and we appreciate everything that Ms. Wilkins does. She's very dedicated to her programs, and we're moving towards credentialing our students, which means they will have licenses and certificates when they leave high school, and we have a lot of promise and are working towards that, and she's just doing a really, really good job in that area. So again, thank you for making us proud. We look forward to you being the state CTE director. So you can come back, we'll be like Mr. Baldwin, we'll give a state report next, okay? So thank you, thank you very much. And her certificate is coming.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Next item on the agenda is a superintendent's contract. I would like the board to take action tonight and extend our superintendent's contract, Ms. Allison Scholler, for one additional year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say she's done a great job this first year here. She's brought us through some tough times, and I hope we have her here for many more.
To say, I sit in awe of the job that she does, and I was a superintendent here in the county for five years, and she just works 24/7, tackles the problems that many people were afraid to tackle, and she has helped our school district become a better place. Do I have a motion and a second? Do we extend her contract for one year? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And may I just say one thing? While we're recognizing employees, I'd just, I'd like to really thank my staff, the whole school district, everybody has pulled together, and it's a great team. I have so many right hands, I couldn't even name them all, but I'm just very appreciative of my staff, and we're able to do it together. It's not just me, but thank you, because I'm very glad to be here.
Thank you once again. Okay, next item, overnight field trip request. Ms. Scholler.
Okay, we have, one, board members, you had already approved and it's taken place, and that was the state track championship in Greensboro in May. Two, coming up, we have a trip to ECU, that's our SASE camp, that's a student athlete, student services camp, and that's June 17th through the 21st. And also FFA convention in Raleigh, and that's June 19th through the 21st.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, our student school board member report, Jonathan.
Well, school has concluded for all students as of last Friday, thankfully. Both the JP Napp Early College and Currituck High School graduations were a success, so thanks to all those who helped. Football conditioning will begin soon in preparation for next year's season. Specifically, Moyoc Middle School will start theirs on July 9th, with it running on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And just a tip of advice to students with summer work, don't procrastinate. That's about all.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, next item on the agenda is policy 2118, student board member. And the request is that we set this policy aside, and it will take a supermajority of the board to do that, and by a supermajority, we need four board members to vote to set this policy aside. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so policy 2118 for student school board members is set aside, and I will explain now why, because the board has decided that we want a representative from JP Napp Early College and also Currituck County High School. So we'll be naming two new student board members, so that will give us a total of three this year and four the following year. Okay, and the two students that we have selected, one from CCHS, Thomas Poston, and the other from JP Napp Early College, is Rick Loggie. Do I have a motion from the board members that we accept these student board members?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, comprehensive school data report. Kiba Baldwin, Director of Student Services.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Schuler. This evening, I just wanted to share with you the results for Currituck County Schools and the comprehensive annual reporting of school crime and violence, suspensions, and dropout data. As noted in your handout and what you may have on eBoard, I just want to point out some talking points, because this is how we utilize this data, not as a measure of what we're doing, because from year to year, things change. And what we try to do is make sure that we understand and see what those indicators are that we need to address appropriately. So, the first thing is out-of-school suspensions. Last year, the 2010-11 school year, we had roughly five hundred and eighty out-of-school suspensions for all ten of our schools. This year, our schools have, they've done a lot since we have taken away in-school suspension to try to keep our kids in. So, prevention programs, community service programs, from the high school initiative to more working with kids on a one-on-one basis to work to decrease that number. We're going to have suspensions. That's no doubt, because we're going to have kids that do things that would warrant a consequence. And so, being able to address why our kids are being suspended and looking at indicators versus, for example, time of day, location, day of week, those are all things that our schools begin to look at to get to the root of the matter. When we look at our crime and violence acts, and that's most important, and that is really a big piece that the state looks at in terms of what our schools do. We had a total of thirty-eight reportable acts for the 2010 school year. The previous year, we had thirty-one. There are three big items that across the state that warrant increases, and those are possessions of controlled substances, possessions of weapons, and for us, possessions of alcoholic beverages. So, we continue to address the issue. We continue to work to put parameters in place to prevent that activity from occurring on our school grounds, and so, this is something that our schools will look and go back to where it happened, when it happened, and see what can we do in terms of school rules, better supervision in areas to prevent this for our upcoming school year. And so, again, this is a talking point. I call your attention to the last two roles. You have persistently dangerous violent acts, and you have criminal acts. We want to be mindful of the persistently dangerous violent acts, because if you have roughly five consecutive acts within a two-year period, then you're in danger of your school being labeled as such. And that means that you would have to afford opportunities for students to attend another school. And we have not been in that predicament for several years now. So, that is one test to our schools, that we are working very hard to prevent those persistently dangerous acts. The criminal acts, we definitely have to report. It's mandated that we have to report to law enforcement as such. Finally, in this report is our dropout count. For the 2010-11 school year, we encountered forty-eight dropouts, and the previous year, we had forty. Now, understanding that our kids leave, it could be any number of situations, from pregnancy to attendance issues, to even something where kids decide they need to go to work. And so, what we have continued to do is address that with our students, give them the facts of what it takes to graduate. We've been to the point of even reducing the credit for our students to keep them in for graduation, but rest assured that the school counselors are definitely working with students. If they do decide to leave us, they know what they have in terms of grades, credits. So, if they needed to go to the next level, that is something that they would be able to take with them. We work very hard to try to keep the kids in. I believe North Carolina has put systems in place to allow kids to graduate in many different areas. And so, we want to make sure that we emphasize that with the students that we have in our schools, and continue to press upon the importance of getting a high school diploma. So, in summary, this is a report from the state that they put out identifying all of the state measures. And so, as a county, we will be taking this back and looking at putting interventions in place for our upcoming school year. Any questions?
Yes, the dropout count, are duplicated, it count? So, if a student drops out and then comes back and then decides to drop out again, do they count twice?
No, sir. It is not. Basically, for this school year, we have, this school year up to the first twenty days of next school year, to count a dropout. So, a student dropped out first semester, they came back in second semester, they dropped out in the second semester, as long as they are enrolled within the first twenty days of next school year, they would not count as a dropout. So, it's a major point that we do when we, the first ten days of school, we try to get as many of our kids in.
What about students who leave Currituck County High School but then go to COA to finish? Are those counted as our dropouts? Because I know of at least one that did that.
That has been the cry from LEAs for a number of years, that students who withdraw from us and go to COA to complete their GED or the Adult High School Diploma still count as a dropout. It is something to do with a federal legislation, while we cannot count it as such. Only if we were able to have our own GED program, I believe that's the way, it would not count. And I'm not sure if any LEA is actually doing that in the state of North Carolina.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And you're up next, Mr. Baldwin. Transportation budget and efficiencies for 2012, 2013?
Last March, I stood before you and informed you about a potential problem we've had within our transportation department. Through an audit by our North Carolina Department of Instruction, Transportation Department, and NC State, our transportation information management system performed an audit. And in order to meet the audit, we need it to be at ninety percent in certain categories. So, you see this seventy-nine point one, that was our score. So, that sent up the flags that we were not doing something right. And if we continued, then we would be losing funding for the next school year. So, based on what we presented to you last March, and what you agreed to allow us to implement, this last audit that we did, this was our score, a hundred and two point four percent. And so, I just wanted to let you know that we've been successful in changing some of our ways on how we run transportation to be a little bit more efficient. And so, this was great work from our transportation staff, looking at routes, reevaluating our times in that standpoint. So, I'm very proud of the department and the changes that they've made. Here is a little chart, just looking at the bare-bones facts. These are factors that determine our state allotment. And what I tried to show you, the 2010-2011 school year, this is what we were presented with. We had roughly sixty drivers. We were spending roughly one point three million dollars, and I will tell you, that state expense is always from the previous year. So, if you're looking at the 2010-11 school year, then that state expenditure amount was from the 2009-2010 school year. And then, you had our local expense, and then, we had the total number of students transported, and the number of regular yellow buses, and the number of our EC buses. That had to change in order for us to try to maintain enough state funding so that we would not be utilizing so much of the local budget. So, this current school year, we operated with roughly forty-seven drivers. We did have a state expenditure right now at one point three million dollars. The local expense was two hundred and twelve thousand. We transported a little bit more students, but we operated almost nine less buses. And so, again, when you look at the 2011, and what was determining our allotment for this school year was based on how much money we spent in 2010, 2011. So, we're always a year behind. It's almost in the sense that in order to do better, you got to work it first to see the end result last. And so, what's important right now for us is where are we going to stand next school year? So, to date, and you have my question marks, because those are estimated end years, because we're not through the, into June yet, we're estimating about one point two, one point three million again in state expenditures. A hundred and seventy-eight thousand in local. Roughly the same number of students, and again, we're looking to operate forty-six buses, which is nine less than what we were operating before. And so, those were the factors in determining our allotment. And one of the things that we mentioned was that we want to get as much of the state money as we can. We don't want to touch the local as much, but we want to use less of that local money as much as possible. And you can see, we're starting to make that trend from that standpoint. We take those factors, and we get an efficiency rating. And so, based on our state and local expenditures, the number of buses that we operate, and the number of students that we transport, we're looking next year's, excuse me, efficiency rating to be at a hundred percent. That is a big jump from the previous year of eighty-five and eighty-one point six. What that means is, once the calculations are made between our state and local expenditures, and they're going to give us a drop-dead number around a million-two or more, then that means we're going to be funded at least at one million-two. We won't lose any funding based on this a hundred percent efficiency rating. There's a lot of other factors that play a part in getting that state and local expenditure, and it's too complicated to get into tonight, but as soon as that is done, then we will know. Right now, these are all estimated percentages and answers, okay? And I just wanted to show you this quick chart. This is what we use to determine what we look like. So, in a nutshell, you can see where Currituck County is, and this is an old example, but we were in the center here. Where we want to be is in the bottom left-hand quadrant. Right now, we are way over to the left, but we're still high in terms of our costs. So, we have to work on that. But based on the number of buses that we have reduced, that is allowing us to have this a hundred percent efficiency rating. So, we came, we said in the presentation that we wanted to work to have a budget rating of a hundred percent by the 2014-15 school year. As just shown, we will have that by the 2012-2013 school year. So, if this holds true, then we will be ahead of the game. So, we definitely want to continue to work to use as much of the state allotment to run transportation so that we can have a less burden on that local budget. Our goals for next school year, definitely, we want to focus on developing quality transportation. We want to focus on creating a safe and respectful environment. Two of those indicators that I'm looking at is definitely our transportation efficiency and our bus management. So, some of our action steps that we're looking at, hiring a transportation supervisor, coordinating training plans for all drivers, fully implementing our bus behavior management plan, which we're calling Champing the Bus. And we want to increase our information base to our families and communities. If I can say, that's the one thing that we, we didn't do a bad job, but we could have done a better job in communicating to our parents about our bus routes, and definitely working when we have special situations that would warrant a phone call, utilizing the Alert Now phone system. That being said, I'll open it up for any questions that you guys may have.
I know this time last year, we were hoping to get into somewhere around the ninety percentile in efficiency, and it looks like you've already moved it into the hundred percentile. Great job. I think that's money that we can put back into our school system and use for some things that we needed some financing in, and just wanted to tell you, I think you've done a really good job bringing up that efficiency.
Well, it's not to my effect. I got a great team that we're working with, and understanding the importance of efficiency and really utilizing what we have. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work and effort. We appreciate it.
Good job, Kiva.
Kiva, good work.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the 2012-2013 CTE state and federal plan, and this needs action, and it will be presented by Monique Wilkins Combs, Director of CTE.
Just not as tall as Mr. Baldwin. All right. Greetings, Dr. Dobney, Ms. Schuler, and all the board members. As the Career and Technical Education Director for Currituck County Schools, I stand before you this evening to request your approval for the application for our CTE state and federal funding for 2012-2013. You were provided the entire eighty-one-page plan via the internet, so I'm only going to highlight a couple of portions from the executive summary. The application must be submitted to DPI, Department of Public Instruction, by June thirtieth of each year, in order to receive and use our state and federal funds for career and technical education for students in grades six through twelve in our county. The application describes the manner in which we propose to use the funds in accord with the purposes mandated by state and federal legislation. Career and technical education is conducted in our middle and our high schools here in Currituck County. Supporting Currituck County Schools' strong academic foundation is a diverse career and technical education curriculum, in which students are provided opportunities to make classroom instruction relevant to the real world. The ultimate goal of CTE is for our graduates to become successful in a career and be a contributing member of society. In our district, the major thrusts for CTE are to provide appropriate career cluster opportunities, to offer credentialing for our students and our staff, to make sure that we meet the No Child Left Behind requirements, and that we provide appropriate CTE courses according to the new CTE essential standards. Career and technical education will continue to support the strategic plan of our county in pursuit of excellence. Activities and priorities will support the mission of CTE, and our state mission is to empower students to be effective participants in an international economy as world-class workers and citizens. And I would just like to let you know, with the application and the things that are provided in the application, for the 2012-2013 school year, we are able to have funding at a level of one million, two hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred and twelve for just our personnel. So, that will mean that with this application, we will be able to fund eighteen positions in our middle schools and high schools, along with two central office support positions for CTE are included in this application. Are there any questions about the application or the plan?
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your award for the regional CTE director. When do you find out about the state?
Well, I go in July for an interview. At least, they told me to prepare for a four-hour interview. I've already submitted my sixteen-page portfolio, and after that, I will find out sometime while I- And after that, I will find out sometime while I'm in Greensboro in July whether I've actually beat those other regions or not. But I do thank the people in the Northeast for allowing me to represent them, because I am representing 18 school districts in the Northeast.
Great. Good luck to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, information items. Our next board meeting and possible work session will be June 28th at 9:00 in the morning. Did you find out if?
I have to work on that.
Okay, sites to be determined and that. So, anyway, right now, scheduled for the 28th at 9:00 in the morning. Next, board member comments. Ms. Ennis, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to thank all the teachers and staff and administrators for a great year this year, and congratulations to all the seniors who graduated from both JP Napp and the high school. I was going to give my time to Ms. Rabino, because I think her student arrived, but I don't think they're... Oh, Ms. Rabino, if you would like to come in and recognize your student, you can have my board member comment time.
Bring her up with me. He made it. This is Tim Cremins, and this is the young man who has made it in for his senior year at the North Carolina School of the Arts.
Congratulations.
Great, congratulations, Tim.
(applause). I don't know without Ms. Rabino.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
I'd also like to congratulate all of my graduating students. I had an opportunity to go to their new early college graduation over in COA, and it was great. They performed very well. They went off real good. Some of our students graduated with degrees, which is a first for Currituck, and numerous ones graduated with, what, up to 60 credit hours or more. So, I mean, they're going to college with a lot of money in their parents' pocket. So, it really helps. Our high school graduating, I've been to 35 of them, and this is one of the better ones. And so, everything went good. I thoroughly enjoyed it, even though it's my last one. I hope all of you have a good summer. We're going to have some staff development, and I hope all the people can participate as they possibly can.
Just to add on to Mr. Barnes's comments, by degrees, he meant, what was it? Four of our students received associate's degrees from college when they graduated from high school, which is to be commended, because that's full two years' worth of college. Okay, Ms. Etheridge?
Same sentiments that Amy and Mr. John had. I'm so proud of our students and all of the seniors that graduated, both from JP Napp Early College as well as Currituck County High School. Both graduation ceremonies were wonderful, and I thoroughly enjoyed being at both of them. And we just have some outstanding students and parents as well in the county, and I'm proud to be associated with their school system.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Real quick, both graduations, like I said, enjoyed them, enjoyed the kids. A little while ago, we had, what, eight or nine teachers and bus drivers up here retiring. I was sitting here, real quick, trying to figure out several hundred years of experience of teachers sitting here in front of us. Being a retired teacher, I know the greatest two days of teaching is your first day and your last day. So I'd like to wish all of our teachers and bus drivers and custodians who have retired, enjoy every day of your retirement. I would like to welcome our two new student board members here. And last but not least, teachers, your first day off is coming up. Enjoy every day of your summer. Because it's only about 10 weeks, you'll be back. So enjoy your summer, rest up, have a good time, go on vacation, and we'll see you back here in August.
And I'd just like to add, at that reception that we had before the board meeting tonight, we recognized some outstanding teachers and teacher assistants here in the county, and so we honored them. I guess I'd recommend that Jonathan rest up this summer, because you're going to have two new board members to train next year rather than one. So, and I hope everyone has a safe, happy, and healthy summer. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.